And it is 6:30, so we'll begin this meeting. Can we have a roll call of who is here? Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
And Cindy Krasinski here. So, welcome to our September 23rd School Committee Meeting. One of the things we do have to decide, and it's on the agenda to decide now, is when our next meeting will be. We could kick it down a little further and put it under "other," and wait till Maren is able to get here and join. Does that seem like a good idea?
Exactly.
We'll do that, and we'll put it under "other." And I do want to let the public know that we will be moving into executive session to conduct bargaining with the teachers' union, and we will be adjourning from executive session. We will not be returning here. So, that's good. Superintendent Leclerc, do you have any announcements before we do a public speak?
Yes, just a few. We've completed our first week of remote learning, and overall, I think it was very positively received by families. Also, athletics are beginning this week, and students will be presenting their coaches and the athletic director with their COVID tests. So, that's underway. We are going to be looking at some health metrics this evening to begin to consider whether we're moving to remote learning in mid-October, and so I look forward to that discussion. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're going to open this up to public speak, and I want to ask everybody to please introduce themselves as you signal to speak. And we're going to ask for a three-minute time limit for each person, so please keep it to three minutes. And if you signal now, I will be scrolling through constantly to make sure that we call on everybody right now. Let me look. I do not...
I see Linda.
You see Linda? Good. And I see Barb, Alice afterwards. Okay. So, Linda, welcome.
There. Can you hear me now? I'm Linda Broadhurst. I'm a resident of East Hampton. I've had two students graduate from EHS, and I have a third student there now. And I just had a couple of questions, one being the ventilation. I know we are having them checked, but that's all I know. I don't know, have they been? Is there a timeframe? Do we know when? If they have, have they passed? And I'm generally speaking about the high school, because that's what I'm personally interested in at this time. Being a new high school, I would think it would pass, so I'd like to know that. I don't know if there's going to be something put out when this all happens. That was my one thing. The other thing in watching last week and then listening to the governor speak about his wishes about schools getting back into the classroom and going by the three weeks, and I know you're all switching your meetings around because you want to keep track of that. And I went on today to look at the map with the colors, and East Hampton is in the green. And I went on all surrounding, because I know you made mention that students' school choice and that there may be teachers that aren't living in East Hampton. So, all around, surrounding East Hampton, the only other one green was Holyoke, and all others that touch East Hampton are gray. So, I know that's only one week, but I want to know, like, are we going to be kept up to date on this? And basically, I'm asking, you know, how soon can we get students back into the school safely? I know there were plans made for just the hybrid, and that's what I'm interested in, is at least getting the high school back hybrid. So, those are my concerns, and I'm just hoping for some clarity on those.
Thank you. Alice Barber?
Hi there. My name is Alice Barber. I have one child who's just entering middle school this year, and I just wanted to speak and express my deep gratitude to all of you and all of the teachers. Our experience has been really quite wonderful, and the teachers have been attentive and while also not lowering expectations, and we feel very, very held and kept very safe by the school district. So, I just wanted to say kudos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda? Amanda Moody?
Hello. Thanks so much for the time.
Okay, Amanda, Amanda, I'm going to have you pause for a minute. Amanda, can you, can you pause for a minute? So... If you, if you are a if you are a member of the public, could you please just turn off your, your video? Actually, it looks like we don't have many. I want Amanda to try again.
And you can always put a comment in the chat box to other teachers.
Amanda, we can't hear you, but we're hoping we're going to be able to in a minute. Let's try Peter Marks for now, and then I'll come back to Amanda. Okay, Peter?
Yes, good evening. I would like the school committee and the mayor to have a discussion or like start a discussion to look into the impact on mental health for the students versus the, the very low risk of getting COVID in our schools at this point. Just like the first caller said, we are in the green. The infection rate in Western Massachusetts is very, very low. My understanding that the mayor has her own opinion on, on rules that the state governor guidance shouldn't apply for East Hampton. I'm shocked by this. And I hope that the school committee will like, like ask those questions and say like, hey, which guidance do we follow? Like, are we following state guidance? Are we following the mayor's guidance only? And really have somebody bring in an expert on the mental health impact, because I can tell you from my kids at home, we have two kids, one in middle school, one in high school now. And for a mental health perspective, it has been a challenge. The kids are missing the social dynamics. The kids are missing the ability to set up playtimes and just like interact with kids the same age and really be out there. And there's so many other risk factors from, from depression to like getting too reserved, to not having social skill development. And I truly, truly ask you to consider those items in addition to just looking at like, does my ventilation meet the virus piece and everything? Because I feel like we are hanging ourselves up on like some magic number on like airflow, and we're forgetting about everything else. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Casey Crisello and then go back to Amanda and see if we can get her back on. Casey?
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm out in the woods. I'm going to, I'm going to turn off my video. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to express gratitude for all of your thoughtfulness and for all the preparation for all the teachers and administrators, everyone that's working really hard. It's night and day, as we can assume that it would be from the spring to now, and I feel like my child's or my children are able to get to know their peers without a mask on, including their teacher, and see expressions through the screen, even though it's not ideal. But I feel like the remote learning has been rolled off, rolled out very very thoughtfully, and certainly there are things that are, you know, not working like Zoom sometimes, but for the most part, it's been a good experience. And so, when they do eventually go back with masks on, I feel like there's at least that kind of knowing each other and their classmates without a mask on the screen. So, I just wanted to express my gratitude for the district as a whole. And I know it's been a lot of hard work from everyone involved. So, thank you, and I look forward to what your discussion is tonight.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, we're going to try again with Amanda Moody, and hopefully we'll be able to hear her this time. Amanda?
Let's see if it's working now.
A little better.
Can you hear me?
A little better, yes.
All right.
Amanda, Amanda, I am so sorry. We cannot make out what you're saying. I'm so sorry.
Not work.
Maybe, maybe Amanda could try calling back on her cellphone through Zoom. That's what I tell my students, or making sure she has the app downloaded on her computer and goes through with the invitation. Like, those are what I...
I think she's... Can you hear me from my cellphone?
Yes.
Yay!
Right. Let's do this this way. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So, I am both the parent of a high school student and a special population student in the DLC program in the middle school. First, I want to thank everybody for the time and energy that has gone into the successful launch of this year. There have been so many positives. As we consider returning our special population students and when we eventually return them, because I am optimistic we eventually will, I want to speak from my experience working in an alternative specialized setting that's currently in person and advocate that when we do so, we use the utmost caution, because what we set in place as minimums currently will be minimums, and there will be lots of times that those are broken. So, although the state has given us the option to consider six feet versus three feet, I would strongly advocate, we go on the higher number, because what starts as six feet becomes kids impulsively hopping across that line, teachers needing to come in to solve problems. We also currently are looking at putting students where? The DLC program in the middle school doesn't have windows, much less the current ventilation system at Whitebrook has always been concerning to me. So, I would really ask that we are cautious, as much as the providers have been immensely helpful and are doing their very best. I want to be very careful that what we ask of them and what we ask of our students is safe and reasonable. My child has been working for ages to keep his mask on. He does his very, very best. However, he doesn't always understand. The mask starts to slip down. He puts his fingers in. I don't want him to accidentally get somebody else sick. I don't want him to get anything from anyone else, even though our numbers are low. I just want us to exercise the utmost caution in how we organize that environment. And that we really look at the fact that that, the population we're talking about bringing back first are our highest need and our highest risk students. So, please, as you have already done in the preparation for this year, I would like to see us exercise the utmost caution and detailed planning as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that was it, but I'm going to scroll through. If anybody wants to talk, please signal now. I see Ben Hershey. I see Ben.
Thank you. My name is Ben Hershey. I'm an East Hampton resident. I just wanted to jump in with a couple of quick comments. The first week and a half has been an amazing journey for my second grader. He's definitely learned more about the internet than I ever thought possible. And it's been a pretty remarkable adventure, and his teacher has been like a sort of Buddha figure, like willing to ride the most complicated like problems, and I really respect and appreciate her, and I feel like I've heard a lot, a lot of that about the teachers in this town. Just a thought, like, I understand that there's an incredible pressure from Desi and Commissioner Riley to get people in buildings, and I understand that we, I'm sure that we're feeling that. And if that is to happen, if we are to move to hybrid, I just want to please, like, beg that we begin deeply planning for that right now, because there's a lot of hybrid going on around the state that is not working out, and that is kind of a disaster. And there's a lot of kids falling through the cracks, and it's a bit of a, well, let's just call it a giant mess. So, it's, it's, it's a reasonable desire to want to get these kids back. I absolutely get it, and I've heard a lot of sad stories as well about children who are really suffering. So, I want to get these kids back. So, that's one thing. The other thing is like, I want to please, please insist on a reemphasis on figuring out how to work with kindergarten especially, and maybe preschool as well, but preschool, kindergarten, first grade are barely hanging on, I think. And I really, really want to like push us all to put them first, perhaps, and if, and maybe special populations definitely have a certain kind of meaning. But get those kindergarten and first graders some serious attention, because it's putting heavy expectations on a five-year-old to, you know, do the things that they would normally do in a class, but on Zoom seems really hard, and I've, I've talked to a few people who are desperate to have something changed. So, just focusing on those populations, I think, would be very helpful. Otherwise, thank you all for the incredible work. It's a work in progress, but there's so much in this, the city and this district. I'm deeply appreciative. Thanks.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Hi. I am a parent of a kindergartner at Maple, and I, I'm glad Ben said something about the kindergartners. My little guy, he's doing the best he can, but it is, I just want to say that it has really been a struggle for him to be there all day, and I really want him to have the joy of learning and, you know, so I don't know if there can, I'm not sure of the parameters of the flexibility of, you know, you know, do you want us to turn the, the camera off when he's having a meltdown or, you know, or just I just wanted to express that I know everyone's working really hard and, and, you know, but just, yes, I'd like to second that the, the kindergartners being on on Zoom four, five times a day, you know, at 30-minute intervals is, is very, very challenging right now. But, you know, I know we're still just starting out too, but I wanted to speak up for my little guy.
Thank you. Evan?
Hi, I'm Evan Carvel-Zimmer. I have a first grader and a kindergartner at Maple, and, oh yeah, we've got, it's, it's, it's fun. I wanted to speak, though, to concerns about if the length of the school day can be adopted, if we can look at that. I know there are requirements from the state. I look at what's going on in first grade classroom in my house in the living room, and it's so wonderful. There's really good stuff happening. My first grader, my autistic first grader is really engaged in school. It's a challenge. Zoom is hard for her. Regulation is a challenge. But if I imagine that teacher in a classroom in a hybrid situation with the mask on, trying to teach online and in person, I actually think it would be harder. And yet, the length of the day is so hard, both for my kindergartner and my first grader. I know there are requirements from Desi about how much the teachers teach, but I wonder if we could look at a more developmentally, you know, centered on these younger kids, so they get the core, but they're not unreasonably stressed out. And I'm, I'm not actually saying hybrid, I think, would be better. What's going on in my house is good, but the length of it's hard. The problem with hybrid isn't the in-person. The problem with hybrid is how then we teach the kids at home on the off days. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will look through. I don't see anybody else. Time to raise your hand is now. All right. Okay, so it looks like I'm going to go through one last time. There's only two pages tonight, and we are going to close public speak. Okay, so now we have matters up for discussion, and the first one is guidelines for public comment policy. Shannon, did you want to talk about that? You're on mute.
Sorry. So, the only thing I wanted to bring up was a comment that was made at our last meeting, or possibly the one before, regarding being able to speak more than once about a particular topic. And I just wanted, I was hoping that we could just clarify what the policy says versus us telling people that they can't speak more than once. The way I understood the policy, and we did get it attached to our, our packet, was number two. It looks like we, you know, anybody who wants to talk more than once in a specific meeting is, is needs written or needs a permission. Other than that, I don't see why someone wouldn't be able to continue a conversation at another meeting. I just want to make sure we can clarify that for everybody.
Yeah, I, I think the, the misunderstanding, and you know, maybe it's the way I phrased it. The, what I asked is because we were trying to fit as many people in during public speak, if you remember, these were very, very long meetings. I asked that if you have already spoken, could you please not come and speak again, but we didn't at any point tell someone they couldn't talk. We just asked, you know, if you have already used time over multiple meetings on this issue, could you not so that other people could go? And the reason for doing that, and obviously, there was some confusion from people, but the reason for doing that is we only have to do 20 minutes of public speak, and what we have been trying to do is allow everybody to speak. And when we do that, and if you remember, we've been meeting every week for a very long time, those create very, very long meetings. So, the sense is, if you've already had your time, we didn't forbid anybody. We just asked people to please step back so that other people during the hour, hour and a half that we would do public speak, they would have a chance for their voice. I don't know how everybody feels about that, but Lori?
I would just like to echo Cindy's sentiments, because our public speak was getting out of hand. In fact, the public was starting to get nasty to each other about time limits, and I feel that we allowed everyone to speak on certain subjects. And I've gone to school committee meetings in other districts where school committee meetings don't even allow for public speak every time. There are certain sessions where the public can speak, and we were allowing people to go an hour and a half. At one night, it was two hours. Certain times, we were meeting more than once a week, because they were speaking during our work sessions, our meetings. We had meetings on Friday night. I want to hear the public. We were receiving emails from the same people who were speaking to the same thing more than once. So, Cindy had said, let's allow everyone to speak before people repeat. I think that made total sense, because we were starting to go way too long. And generally, it's fine for people to speak on the same subject if we're continuing, but not when we had meetings that were going far longer than anyone wanted, including the public.
And you, Jonathan?
Yeah, if I can just weigh in real quick. I would agree with everything that you folks have said as your interpretation. The additional thing, I guess, I would add is there seemed to be a concern when this was brought up a couple of meetings ago, that if folks had new information, that they were not allowed to come back with that new information, and I would just clarify that that was very much not the case. We were speaking to people reiterating something that they had already spoken to at a previous meeting, and if somebody has something new to say, even if you've spoken previously, I know my opinion would be that you're certainly welcome to bring that and share with us.
I agree. Thank you. And Mayor?
Yeah, so, I mean, I certainly hear my, my colleagues on, on this matter and the length of the meeting. And two quick comments, that an email to the school committee is not the same as getting it onto the public record in your own voice in a recorded session. While I understand different school committees have different structures around public speak, when, when we have like the last meetings, you know, on different topics that we have around public speak, I feel it is a signal to this public body that an additional avenue for public speak on a session must be or should be made available before this body takes a vote. Also, I worry about what someone thinks is repeat or, or not new information or new information or sees a connection, and I understand that's really gray. But, but I do worry about that. Or if, if somebody wants to come back on public speak on the same topic at another time, because they have new information that perhaps, you know, happened in a meeting, right? I think about the presentation around health metrics, and people had, you know, questions about that, and, and then there was a presentation, and they're like, oh, okay, so thank you very much, and, you know, further question or a comment on that? Yeah, I mean, I, I, I would just my concern in, in these times, and, and my urging to not just this body, but to all of our boards and committees and to city council, is that the, the burden and frustration that's happening in our public meetings because of what we're all dealing with and the unknown, and really just the fear, would not be, I feel, a good time to change policy or strictly interpret longstanding policy that normally has served a public body well because of things like length. Let's be flexible and have another public, you know, speak and, and get that on the record and, you know. And, and so, so I would just, I would just caution what's happening now is not what always happens in our...
I'm going to call Dr. Leclerc, but the only thing I wanted to clarify again, like Lori and I had said before, and Jonathan, we didn't stop anyone from talking. We had volunteer voluntarily for people to check themselves, and there's, there is a big difference, because I totally agree with you. We have to hear from everybody.
I, I would be concerned with apparent authority, that a body of an elected official giving, us giving that guidance or hope would restrict somebody's, what they feel personally as, as freedom, that, you know, and, and I worry about apparent authority and transparency. Thank you very much, ma'am chair.
Dr. Leclerc?
I was just going to give a point of clarification for anybody in the audience that is not clear. When you began this topic and you kind of turned it over to Shannon, who is the chair of our policy subcommittee, I just want to be clear to the people on this call that we have a school committee policy that lays out our policy or our practice around public speak. The policy was not necessarily fought up in the heads of our school committee members. We have a larger board at the state level that vets policies on a legal basis and makes recommendations to school committees, and then the subcommittees of the school committees review those policies and then adopt them. So, Shannon leads that policy subcommittee in East Hampton, and so that is a formal, our public speak policy is a formal policy within the school committee board, the elected board. So, if there are changes to be made, that would need to go back to the policy subcommittee, and I'm not saying that's what people are suggesting. I just want the family, the community people and the, the family members that are... that's what people are suggesting. I just want the family, the community people and the, the family members that are listening to understand that we're abiding by or following a policy that the committee has voted on and chooses to keep in East Hampton. And you know, I don't know how old it is. I don't, I don't have it open in front of me. I think Shannon probably.
I believe it was 2018 if I'm not mistaken.
So it's relatively new, but Shannon pulls us together to review policies quite often to our detriment. So I want people to know that it is a policy. If anyone wants it sent to them, we are happy to send it to them. But it wasn't anything that was created by this group and, you know, and, and just thinking about how can we make things more challenging? It's an actual voted on policy.
Right. And I think tonight was just to clarify.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious. I'm sorry. Is the two minute time limit written in the policy? I don't have it out in front of me.
Three minutes.
Up to three. Okay. Cause we've said two. So I would just like to repeat that when we were having so much time for public speak, some people were going to eight minutes, nine minutes. I was timing. So we were already beyond our policy. And when Cindy made that statement, it's because we decided at a certain meeting that we were gonna allow 15 minutes for one topic, 15 minutes for the other topic. And it was then that Cindy said, so please, if you've already spoken on the topic because we have a time limit, could you please not speak? That was the only reason that it was even stated.
Yeah. Thank you, Lori. And Mira?
Um, I, yeah, I, I mean, that the, I just want to be clear. My comments are directed towards a practice and not necessarily an anecdote, which I, I know that's a little bit where, where Shannon was coming from when she first opened. I, I would, consideration for the policy subcommittee. Given, again, permanent policy, I'm very wary about changing in such extraordinary times. But both the city and in their operations have issued temporary orders such as meeting and voting remotely. So with the concern around public speak, allowing the current policy to stand, but maybe discuss a temporary order when there is expected unusually hard, unusually high public comment is, and I would just, you know, I, I, I mean, or I just wonder if it is a conversation because as, as I said, you know, we, we've seen, well, we're sitting here on Zoom now. So I would, I would just throw that out as a suggestion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Because otherwise we will go on to subcommittee meet updates. All right. Shannon, do you have a policy update?
Um, we did meet on the ninth and unfortunately I did not get Sue all of the information that she needed to get it on this week's agenda. So we will have to put it on our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan, did you have a collaborative meeting since?
We will be meeting one week from today. My only update is we did push back a little bit. I had mentioned previously that there's going to be an executive director search for the collaborative. The timeframe on that has been pushed back a little bit. The deputy executive director is going to be stepping in after the beginning of the new year to take on some of those responsibilities in the meantime. And I'll check back in after our meeting next Wednesday.
Okay, okay. So that's, I see the 30th. All right. Thank you. I, I am, Jonathan and I are part of the finance subcommittee team and Mira is not here right now, but we have not met. So we don't have anything to report right now. So let's go on to, now we have a, I'm a little confused. After subcommittee update, it says policy subcommittee. Is that the material that you were hoping to have ready and you don't have ready? So we can. Last. Mira is here. So. Welcome, Mira. We were just doing subcommittee updates. So I had mentioned in your absence that we don't, haven't had a meeting since our last meeting. Is there anything that you wanted to weigh in about before we go on?
Thank you Cynthia. Yeah, I apologize to everybody for being.
That's okay.
Yeah, I think that we are just working on the next finance subcommittee meeting date to possibly look at the reports coming back from Colliers on our building. So hopefully we'll work that out with when they're being returned to the school department and work on timing. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be having that meeting.
Okay, thank you. So Shannon, just for clarification, next week is when we're going to have all those policies or is that going to be pushed to a later time?
No, it's, um, as far as I know, it's all ready. I don't know when our next meeting is, so I can't, I couldn't say.
Okay. But whenever our next meeting is, we'll put those on there.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. So now it's time for our superintendent update. Dr. Leclerc.
Yes. So this evening we have a presentation for you, kind of a part two around the health metrics. And we have Megan Harvey with us this evening. Megan Harvey Ward, she's a professor at Springfield College and she's an epidemiologist. And she has children, a child at Center Peppin, I think, correct? Center Peppin, two, two children.
Three total.
She has graciously agreed to sit on our COVID response team that we have at the school district level along with our school physician and some other key people. And she has worked on a metric that we're going to share with you this evening. You can review it, ask questions. Megan's going to kind of present it. And then she'll give us kind of a sense of where we are as far as getting ready to go back to some in-person form of learning, perhaps for our special populations. Kind of if that's, if that's in the cards for us based on what we're seeing from a virus response rate. So Megan, I can put it up on the screen, I think. Oh no, I need the ability to share the screen, Cindy.
There you go.
Okay. There it is. I don't know if it's, is it large enough for people to see?
Hasn't loaded yet.
You don't see it yet? Can you see it now?
No, not yet. It's loading.
Stop my share. Let me share again. How about now?
Yes.
Okay. Is it large enough? Or do you want me to make it a little larger?
That looks good.
Okay, Megan, welcome. And if you want to take it away, please go ahead.
Sure. Thank you for that nice introduction. Yes, I am an epidemiologist. My research focus is maternal and child health, but of course in getting my degree, I had to learn about infectious disease epidemiology as well. So I have been keeping my finger on this. You know, since February really, and I'm advising Springfield College with their reopening plans, which I would am so pleased to report that four weeks in, and they've had two positive cases. So if that instills some confidence, hopefully that helps. And so I'm also happy to help here. You know, I have three kids, two are in the district and one is on his way up. So you know, I'm very invested in making sure our kids can come back. And I, I listen to the public speak and I, I hear your concerns about, you know, what's the mental health risk versus the risk of the virus? And isn't the risk of the virus really low? And what does it really mean for our town? And so I'll talk through these metrics and try to weave that in. And anytime you have questions, just stop me to ask to clarify. That way I can just address them as they're coming. So this table with sort of the red to green, you know, idea of what, what would probably be safe for our community and our children to do is based on sort of starting at the top. I don't want to call it an order of priority, but it's sort of like you, it's a gating criteria. If you don't meet this bolded section, then you really can't go on and look at more stuff. So the top of that list is our hospital capacity, right? So regardless of the reason, if we have ICU headrooms, you know, at 90% and 80% and, you know, at crisis levels, even if it's due to something else, we just can't, as I think someone mentioned in public speak, our providers are working so hard, our healthcare providers to take care of us. And so, you know, if we don't have the capacity at our hospitals to take care of a potential outbreak, that's sort of our first gating criteria. And the great news is that Massachusetts is doing awesome. We're at less than 5% of our ICU headroom used throughout the state, and that's even lower in Western Massachusetts, as many of you pointed out in public speak. So the next section is our case rate per 100,000 population and our transmission rate. And what that's telling us, we get that information from a variety of different sources. And the source that is the, not from a variety of sources, but on a variety of different levels. So the main level that's calculated on is the state level, which I'm sure you are thinking to yourself, areas of the state are quite different. So there are some areas of our state that have quite high transmission rates and high caseloads. And Western Massachusetts and East Hampton is in a better position. But as you know, we have people who move in and out of the area on a daily basis, who travel for work. And there's certainly nothing to say that, you know, something that's happening on the other side of the state isn't relevant. That's what's happening here. I will take into account a little lower on the table, sort of local metrics in addition, but this is sort of the state level. Right? So we have seen increasing caseload, right? We're up to about 5.6 new cases per 100,000 population in Massachusetts. That's as of Monday. So we are updating this on a weekly basis. And that was up 2% from the prior Monday. So we are seeing unfortunately increasing rates in the state. And that translates, translates to a transmission rate of about 1.13. And the transmission rate, I actually really like it because it's super helpful in, in explaining what's about to happen. Right? It's sort of our first warning sign of what might be coming. So if we have a transmission rate of one, it means that every person who's sick gets one other person sick. So if RT equals one, then we just have a steady caseload. If RT dips below one, that's great. That's what we like to see. And then we start seeing caseload drop. And when RT goes over one, that's when we start seeing, you know, multiple people getting sick and outbreaks spreading. So 1.2 is sort of the level that the state and the CDC has set as not an alarm level, but like, hey, here's a, a idea that things are kind of headed towards, you know, growth that's hard to control. So right now in the state, we're at 1.13. So that's sort of in the middle. You know, not quite in the alarm yet, but certainly you want to bring that back down closer to one or under one. Want to roll me? Perfect. Yes. So once you pass like what hospitals are doing and what the caseload looks like in the state, the next thing that you really need to look at is not just what risk level are we at right now, but what's our ability to control an outbreak if it comes, right? Because that's, it can be really unpredictable. All the stats in the world are really helpful. But when a case comes, you want to be able to keep that one case as one or two or three cases versus quickly ending up with 100 cases. And so a lot of that has to do with testing, three parts of testing. You know, can you get tests? Can you get them if you're symptomatic and asymptomatic? Can you get them if you're feeling fine? Can you do it more as like a screening? What percent of those tests are coming back positive? I think there's a lot of emphasis that's put on that. And we're at about a 2.1% of our tests coming back right now. But keep in mind that that's, it's all depends on the numerator and the denominator, right? And the denominator is how many people are getting tested. So it's important to keep track of. We certainly wouldn't want that rate to climb really high, but the more testing we do, the lower that rate should go. So just sort of, it's one factor to keep in mind with everything else. And then the other part of testing that's really important is how quickly can you get your test back? Ideally, you would get your test back in a couple of hours. There's certainly less than 24 hours. Getting your test back in about two days is where we are in average. It certainly depends on where you get tested. I'm sure some of you have been tested or know somebody who's gotten their test back the next day. And that's definitely ideal. Anything more than a two day turnaround for tests is, I don't want to say it's like basically not getting tested, but in terms of contact tracing and containing an outbreak, it's really not useful for, for doing that. So once we look at like, what's our caseload and what directions are going in, we think about if there was, was a case, is there enough testing for us to quickly contain it? Right? And so again, Massachusetts is doing pretty well with that. We have several stop the spread sites, fairly good access to tests. It's not certainly universal, universal widespread rapid testing would be the ideal situation. Right? We essentially don't have an outbreak or pandemic if we have that. So fingers crossed that those saliva tests are coming one day. And then the last level is to think about, you know, the, the stuff that many of you pointed out in public speak, which is that, you know, East Hampton as a town and in the, the cities that are around us, we have lower rates than other areas, right? So if you look at a map of the state, I think somebody even pointed out, you must have been on that public health website, just great that, you know, our town is green. That means a fairly low rate. Many towns around us are gray. The thing to keep in mind is that population numbers are lower in Western Massachusetts than out. And those are rates. So they, they take into account population size. But they're a little harder to be certain about. There's a wider range of uncertainty. Clearly this, this part of the state is, is doing fairly well right now. But it's something to sort of keep your mind on. It's, it's something to watch. So that's taken into account as sort of the local cluster level. And then the very end of my table, I have to include it is, you know, we can all go back to what will feel hopefully like a much more normal life again, when we have a vaccine and/or a treatment. And that's sort of when we would be able to not worry about it. Masks and spacing in school districts and that would sort of be our green level. But we're sort of looking at something less than everybody back all at the same time until we have something like that available. So that's the metrics. We're going to update it every week. Keep our eye on it. It takes a couple of weeks. So there's a note at the bottom of this table that says, you know, once you roll a group of students into the school, give it about three weeks to see what happens. That should be enough time to see if there's going to be, you know, an uptick. You certainly wouldn't want to space it any closer than that because you wouldn't have data from that first round quite yet. The, the thing with COVID-19 is that the data is sort of delayed. You know, we see transmission rates go up and then later we see caseloads go up. And then later than that, we see hospitalizations go up. And then it might be eight, 10, 12 weeks later that we see death go up. So it takes a while for us to kind of get to that point.
Thank you. Thank you, Megan. And I don't know if anyone has any questions for Megan to help understand that information a little bit more.
Mira?
Oops. Thank you very much, Superintendent and Megan for, for doing this work. I, Megan, I think you answered this and I'm just gonna ask it in the way I understand. So around the clusters, so I'm, when we're looking at transmission rate and whatnot, is, is there, is there a different way we should look at clusters? So like we, we haven't had a lot of clusters out here, right? And, and there's even fewer like the clusters we have seem to be focused around healthcare facilities. So what, what I'm wondering is, is in our mind is we're looking at this data and we're not seeing clusters or a cluster happens. Does that, is there different rate? I'm sorry, different weight we should be looking at as far as transmission and our next steps to, to bring in the next group of students and I.
And I, yeah. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. And yes, you have to be looking at what's going on, on the state level and the county level. But those rates are driven by facilities that have a number of cases happening them. So it's very different to say, oh, Hampshire County has seen an increase and it's in a nursing home in. That's very different than saying we have community transmission happening you know, within East Hampton or with a neighboring town. Those are very different. And so that's, yeah, I think that gets to your point. Like we have to keep that in the nuance. And so we just, it just means combing through the data every week and looking to see.
And to see. And, and, and so one step further, you know, we've read in the, the paper about like, you know, the infamous wedding in Maine. If, if East Hampton were to have that type of a cluster and, and we could contract trace back to that, would that have a different way, rate? Like, so is that superintendent, you know, Leclerc and I, I agree with her is like, at some point in our schools, whether it's just staff or when students, we're going. at some point in our schools, whether it's just staff or when students, we're going to have a case of COVID. And we're going to have more than one, so that shouldn't mean complete shutdown. So if we were to have a cluster issue, you know, I don't know, around some group, do we give that a different rate because we feel because of contract tracing, it's, it's different than like a hard to trace community transition, transmission rate?
Yeah. So that takes into account what systems that the school sets up for contact tracing. Even though there's state contact tracing, you know, I would highly recommend that any institution that's going to open, including a school, should have not just one person, but a couple of people so that, you know, you can kind of be twenty-four hours a day, ready to identify who exposed folks are if there's a case and quickly quarantine. And this actually makes me think about something that folks brought up during public speak, about sort of the guidelines from DSE and from the state, and why they say things like six feet versus three feet, and why they're okay with opening some school buildings, but not other school buildings. And I agree, it's super confusing. And the best that I can estimate from this is that those are, are sort of the bare minimums. But if you match it up with the science, right, like three feet is not far enough apart. That's sort of assuming that all transmission, large respiratory droplets, and we know that it's airborne. At this point, that's very well confirmed. And I mention that because, you know, if you send all of our cases to state level contact tracing, a close contact is someone who is within six feet for fifteen minutes, which means, you know, what do we do about the kid on the other side of the classroom? They're technically more than six feet away. So it's a whole bunch of questions about how you do that. And so, yes, you would definitely wait that differently depending on, you know, what's going on and how quickly you can react.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Leclaire, can we go back to the other display that you had? So the frustrating thing for tonight is that we don't have the new data. We moved our meeting to tonight so that we could be looking at fresh numbers. And they were supposed to come out at six o'clock and they, they didn't.
Well, I can, I can tell you, oops, sorry, that's not. I did, I have a weekly meeting with Bree, our health agent. And, you know, I, you know, I can tell you that she feels the number is low. I think she, the number she told me was three.
For East Hampton.
For East Hampton.
Right.
And she felt as though we would probably go into the unshaded area. I keep looking at, you just saw me, I looked again, it's not up yet.
No.
So those are informal numbers. You know, I, I would certainly not want to be quoted on that. But if it comes up in the next few minutes, we can pull it up.
So again, my concern always is not just East Hampton, but the surrounding communities that we draw from, especially school choice and our staff, the majority of where they come from. So I, I'm just frustrated that we weren't able to do that. I do have a number of questions, and I don't want to be asking all the questions when somebody else may have some. So does anybody have any questions before I?
Do you want to leave this up or no?
I would appreciate.
I can leave it up if you could.
And honestly, I didn't mind when it was the full sheet that I could kind of squint and see, but I'll leave that up to other folks too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I'll just say I don't have any specific questions. I really appreciated the mayor's questions and even more so Megan's dissection of those questions. So I look forward to hearing your questions, Cindy.
Okay. Maren, did you have questions? Because I know.
Something really quick about today's numbers?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, you know, that today's numbers are really important, of course, and we want to know what direction things are heading. But we know what the past couple of weeks are, and so that's equally important. So, you know, it's, it's helpful to know what like the completion of this week's data looks like. But the past, you know, the trend is important too. And so we have some more information captured here.
So Megan, can I ask a favor for number one? That as we're looking at three weeks, is it possible that as we're going to be looking at making decisions, that we can actually see the three weeks on a presentation? This is the positivity rate, you know, these are the cases and.
Are you looking for something like that?
But not just for East Hampton.
Oh, gotcha.
You see what I'm saying? So if we're looking globally at the area, it would.
I've captured some of that, but I didn't go, I didn't do it last week.
Right, right. It would be nice to be able to see them at a three-week chunk so that you can see, oh, Megan is saying that cases are going down, oh, and I can see where they are. You know, Megan is saying, or, you know, the team is saying, you know, the positivity rate is this, and I can see that that is definite. So if we could do that going forward, I think that's really important. I have a couple of questions. You have, when we're looking at cases per one hundred thousand, you have decreasing fourteen days or more and stably low. Could you please put in there what you mean by stably low? What is a stably low? And the reason why I ask, and I'm not disagreeing with you because I am not an epidemiologist, my stably low might be different from your stably low. I don't even know what the word really looks like in terms of COVID. So is it possible for us to have clarification there?
Yeah, I always, I think epidemiologists like to shy away from giving like a hard and fast number. And that was another sort of comment that I noted down from some of the questions that I've seen the past couple of weeks from parents, like, how do we know? When's like the day that something shifts and we see that? And unfortunately, just like what is a low infection rate? You know, what is adequate testing? What is a good positive rate? These are all sort of things where you just sort of make your best estimate and look at the picture as a whole. So I will, I think I can give you some information about what a low infection rate would look like. Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not asking for a hard and fast number, but if you could just give us a little bit more, that would be helpful. I think it was Maren who had the next question.
Well, I, I will push a little bit harder. I, I, I do think we need a very hard, fast number. I, I think that there's, because to make decisions on which phase we're in, just like the transmission rate, there's hard numbers there. I think that we do need to have some clarity about where we're headed for different pieces. And one of the things that we've been talking about, and this gets to what Cynthia was just mentioning about not just East Hampton, right? We need a certain number that is East Hampton population. We also need a hard number in terms of the relationship to the other communities around us, whether it's because students are choicing in or teachers are living in those communities and commuting in. Or, you know, and their kids are in those school districts and they're interacting with their kids in that town. So, I mean, one of the things that we've been looking at is, you know, roughly is around like a three percent in East Hampton and a five percent within the surrounding three counties. And so that, you know, that gives us a certain sense of what, where we're looking at in terms of what's a reasonable number. And of course, that relates to the ongoing increase or decrease in flex, in, uh, infection. But it also gives us some thresholds because we're not always going to be able to be the ones that's deciding. And so this committee needs to have lines that are more or less very clear, you know. I want to say black and white. I want to say that it's like, you know, three percent of sixteen thousand is four hundred and eighty people. So if we're at four hundred and eighty, then we've hit three percent of our city is infected. And so I know that that's not going to fit with exactly how you just described it. So trying to find a way to work with your desire to be a little bit looser. And of course, to the mayor's point, there's a difference between whether we're talking four hundred and eighty kids in schools versus, you know, four hundred and eighty people in a small, you know, Lathrop community center, and they're all located in that one cluster, right? So there is difference, and I don't want it to be, I understand why we don't want to make it too hard and fast, and yet we need to really be a lot closer to than that than open-ended. But maybe you can comment on that, my, my more of a statement than less really a question.
Yeah, I, I think that makes perfect sense, and you're not alone in wanting clarity on this. I would love clarity too. And so I will go through and, and make my best estimate from what the science is telling us. But anything else that I add in terms of those solid lines, you know, I, I will always include the caveat that it's me, Megan Harvey, an epidemiologist in East Hampton, putting that together. I wish we had better guidance from the federal and the state level. But there's nobody telling us what low transmission rates are or what's an acceptable level. And what guidance we do have is set pretty high. So it's sort of left for all of us in various districts, not just in Massachusetts, but, you know, all over the country, to decide what's a tolerable level of risk and infection and, and all of that. So I hear you. I, I agree with you. I would like clarity too. And I will do my best to see what information I can find.
Great. And that's what, Megan, I want to thank you before I ask more questions. And I think Allison wanted to say something, but I want to thank you for all the work you've done. We're just racking our brains to make it even more precise than we can in a field that we don't understand with an epidemic we don't understand. So we're just, that's, that's why we're pushing so hard. So before I go to Allison, can I ask a quick question? So Maren was talking about, we, we have been tossing around three percent for East Hampton and less than five percent for Hampshire, Hampton and Franklin County. So would that fit into your chart in place of like the three to ten? Is that where we would be putting that information?
And so when you're referring to those percentages, are you referring to the percent of tests that are coming back positive?
Yes, positivity rate.
Yeah, the positivity rate. That's a really hard one. As I was saying when I went through the table, a lot of emphasis is placed on that. But that changes fairly dramatically as stop the spread sites open and close and testing centers are more or less available in the state. So, you know, over a couple of weeks, we can definitely track a percent positive rate. But for us to track a percent positive rate from July to now, or I think the latest, they, they kept the stop the spread sites open, I think, until the end of October now? Is that what, that's the latest I heard? You know, so what will that positivity rate look like in November? I don't know that if we can track it in the same way. So I, I get it, and yes, I think it applies on that sort of line of the metrics, but, you know. And to your prior point, I, I absolutely don't mind answering questions. I love to do this stuff. That's why I have a degree in it and went to school for what feels like forever to do this stuff. So I'm happy to do it, and I'm not offended by questions about it. Epidemiologists are sort of the people that I liken to being like the wet blanket at every party. Like, yeah, but wait, hold on, I gotta tell you something else. It's still bad news. So I don't mind that at all.
Okay, thank you. Allison?
Yeah, I just want to follow up on your train of thinking in relationship to that percent of tests that are positive. And Megan has the third column highlighted, and she has the figure of two point one percent positive test rate. And I believe when Megan read that statistic, it was applicable to the state as a whole. And so I, I guess what I'm hearing Megan say is, I probably can't extrapolate from that, that if that's two point one percent positive test rate for the whole and our metric is that three percent for East Hampton or five percent for the surrounding counties, two point one percent doesn't seem like it meets those thresholds. So to me, am I, am I going down a rabbit hole here?
Well, no, because I, I don't think that that, we, part of the issue that if we're talking about, this is a state number, right? So a state number, we could have a twenty-five percent positive test rate in East Hampton, but because our population is so small compared to Boston, we could still end up with a two point one state positivity rate. So personally, I don't think, I don't care to look at state numbers at all. I don't care about them at all. I want to see Western Massachusetts numbers because that's where we're getting close to where our community is. And yes, I agree, Megan, you said before, people are traveling, people are going different places. I agree that that was more in the summer, but as we're into the fall and into the school year, I think we really got to focus in and find a way that we can have numbers that are just related to Western Massachusetts.
Right.
So I, so I, I was thinking of that in a different way, Maren, so I appreciate you saying what you did because I was thinking two, two point one percent positive test rate in my mind, knowing that the eastern part of the state has higher infection rates than the western part of the state. I was thinking, wow, we must be really significantly lower if the overall state average is two point one percent. That's, that's where my logic was, I was landing with my logic. Knowing that like in East Hampton last week, we were at like a point two seven or something.
We have like one percent of the entire state population in East Hampton, probably. Not that I'm doing, that's not the real math, but, so it just doesn't really, it doesn't, the state numbers doesn't really help us know what's going on locally.
Right. I, I'd, I'd like to thank Megan for coming. I actually asked her to come tonight on the, on the COVID response team with her. And she said a lot of other things last week when we met. One of those very important things that Megan said was the testing. And she just mentioned the stop the spread sites. And when we discussed athletes being able to practice and participate in sports, I had said that I'd really love to see all the athletes be tested. And Megan said not only should they be tested once before they start, she believes they should be tested every week. And the pediatrician that is also on our team stated that it is now very easy to get tests even at Cooley Dick if you are asymptomatic. And Megan, could you please speak to the importance of testing, especially if we do come back or go into a hybrid model?
Yeah, testing is the game changer. The problem with the SARS-CoV-2 virus that causes COVID nineteen is that it would be lovely if only the people who had COVID nineteen were spreading the virus. But we know COVID nineteen is the disease that the virus causes, right? There's a huge chunk of people who are pre-symptomatic before they ever develop symptoms, but they are later going to get symptoms, and asymptomatic folks, especially at the younger age levels, who are spreading the disease without ever knowing that they are in fact infected, right? So it's sort of this idea of like, we think of COVID nineteen with the symptoms that go along with that. But really what we have to worry about is the virus itself replicating and then, you know, being infectious. And it's very infectious among people who have no idea they are sick. And so that's the problem. The more, especially in a sport setting, but I would argue for, you know, any setting, the more that you can test, the more that you can find the pre-symptomatic and asymptomatic cases and pull them out before someone is spreading disease for six, seven, eight days, unaware that, you know, totally unaware that they're sick, the better. And it's particularly important in sports because we know that exertion, like running around or yelling or whatever you're going to be doing in sports, right? That, that projects much more respiratory droplets out and that the viral load can be much, in the air can be much higher for those who are near to a person who is asymptomatically sick. So sort of the more, you know, if I'm whispering in, you know, outside, that's a very small amount of viral load floating around near me. If I'm yelling, running around and, you know, smacking a ball toward someone, now there's a lot of viral load heading that direction.
Excellent. Mayor?
Yeah, so I have a little bit to, to Maren's point. I, I was on a call yesterday with a Mass General Hospital epidemiologist speaking to a bunch of, of mayors about funding actually our own testing sites. And, and so one of the things that she was really strong about and said that, that it needed to happen more and more is that local boards of health put a lot of information into Maven, the, the software that tracks cases. But the output of Maven data to local municipalities overlaid by the state's weekly data by, by not only county, but also by city and town, it, it, it should be combined or there should be some kind of a dashboard that local. So I, I one was, was asking or thinking about your comments and, or what you think about that. But also, have you heard something within your field that we're working towards it? I mean, she was. also have you heard something within your field that we're working towards it? I mean, she was pushing. She had a real issue with, with Partners Healthcare Contract Tracing Program that we funded it to 50 million, then rolled it back because people weren't answering the phone. And, and her thing was like, let's take the rest of that money and make Maven more robust on a local level for, for in fact, schools. And then overlay that with the Wednesday dashboard. That's now an hour and 40 minutes late. That tells us by school. And then just a general comment. So I get tested every week. At Holyoke Medical Center, I walk in, they don't ask me, like they ask me if I've been in contact, they've asked, you know, they, when's the last time I got tested, but it doesn't preclude me from being tested. My return rates for results have gone from anywhere from 30 hours to 79. And our, our whole family does it and we, we track. And it's, so it's super, I mean, clearly there's some part in the plane, like, so you can, like, you can get those results right away. And then the next time you get tested, it's 72 hours. So I, but Holyoke Medical is, and I don't know if Cooley Dick is one, but it's one of the stop the spread sites and has been extended by really like 20 minutes of your time. You go in, you go out. They don't refuse anybody. So I would encourage, we could set the example school committee and go every week. Like together socially distant. Just ask.
That idea.
And Megan, we, we think that testing is going to continue at least until the end of October.
That's the latest that I've heard about the stop the spread sites, but the state controls them and they sort of pop them up in an area that needs it. And then they take them down and move them. And even without the stop the spread sites, testing is much more available than it was, you know, in March and April. But it just sort of depends on who you are and what insurance you have and where you go, whether or not you'll have to pay a co-pay or the entire cost of it and what symptoms you might have. But a stop their spread site is free, which obviously is a big difference. So those are some great points. And the things I jotted down, the contact tracing program, we have probably one of the best contact tracing programs in the country in Massachusetts. And it's not that great. As you indicated, people don't really pick up the phone. No one really wants to say who they've been in contact with. And we don't have a good system set up for helping people remember it. So you know, it's easy to say like, as long as we have lots of testing and contact tracing, whoever gets assigned to do that task in the public school system will have quite the task in front of them to figure out who to be, I mean, that's like a full-time position, at least maybe a couple of full-time positions. As far as the dashboard and to Maren's point as well. Yes. So the, the only thing that I would have commented back to Maren's point about this whole metric system would be really nice if we could look at it just basically at our county and town, city level. We don't have a lot of that data. It just doesn't exist in the ways that accurately makes sense. So state level data, we have much more certainty on that level of data. Right? Then, you know, if we look at percent positive in East Hampton or in Hampshire County, we'll see much more variance on a week to day-to-day and week-to-week basis because the population is smaller. And because the reporting systems just don't operate in the same way. It's the conglomeration of data that gives us some more interest. So I would, you know, I, I totally get your point. And I do think that city level data and the surrounding towns and cities is important. And there should be more of a focus on that. I would love to see Maven producing reports that we could use every week or even more often than that. But I think it's, it requires a bit of digging. And when we were on our meeting last week, you know, we were talking about sort of like us personally, like me developing an Excel spreadsheet and entering numbers in. And, and we just saw, you know, the superintendent's version of that. Like, that's not how good data is collected. Right? Because I can accidentally enter a seven instead of a two. Or I can make my formula calculating something wrong. And there's no one really with eyes on it to check it. So, you know, all that's to say, yes, local data is super important and we will get it to the extent that we can. But you can't hold it up as a holy grail. Well, you shouldn't really hold any data up as holy grail, but I, I think you, you catch my point. You know what I mean?
Yep. Thank you. Mayor? You're on mute. You're on mute.
Okay, here I am. So, so Megan, it just I guess a broader, with contract tracing. So is there any research or thought around if the contact tracer themselves is local? It is more effective than say, a phone bank person from, from partners because it's local or and maybe it doesn't matter. I'm just, I'm struggling as a mayor to figure out my contract tracing funding for not just the city, but for the schools also, and what money I should be asking or what direction. So you know, if it's, it's Shannon making the call rather than, you know, a person out in Boston, does it? Does it matter?
The only evidence that I've seen about that is like college level data. And so it might be a little bit different among a strictly student population, but I think it sort of translates to all of us. We definitely feel better answering the phone to an area code and a local number, right? And we definitely feel better answering text messages than answering a phone call. So that's been, you know, one of the things that they have found at, in the college contact tracing setting, which does tend to have better success rates at the ones that it's working on, but there's certainly been some failures there too. And of course, in every language and, you know, yeah.
Any other questions before we go on? Lori?
I would just like to add that Brooke, our school nurse, is going to be working with the other nurses in the district to have procedures and protocols in place for when more students are back in the different models to know how to follow if there is a case and what the contact tracing will be. And then they are supposed to report to Megan as our epidemiologist on the committee. And then the whole committee will reconvene to discuss it. And Sarah Mochek is leading this committee, the COVID response team.
Yeah, there is a, there is a protocol. And just so you know, all of our nurses have gone through a six-hour contact tracing training through, I want to say DPH, but I'm not 100% sure. But they have all, they have all done that.
Mayor?
Megan, if I can just follow up something on you said. So I mean, of course, anytime that you're transferring data and, you know, manipulating data through formulas, of course, there's human error. So we can all agree with that. But just to, to my understanding though, you know, the report that comes out does list each by, by city or town, right? So, I mean, it would take a little bit of work. But somebody could enter in all of the current total number of tests for each city, town that's within the Western three counties here. And we could come up with our own Western three county percentages, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So we do have the data to be able to do it. It's not easily manipulated. And I don't even know if you can get this as a spreadsheet as opposed to just a word, you know, a PDF document from the state. But there is the possibility that we could be manipulating those data enough points and coming up with local numbers. So that is possible. It's, it's a bear. I do a lot with data. So I know that if it's not in a spreadsheet already, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of human error potentially with writing in all of these numbers into something. So I understand that's definitely a concern. But it is there at least. And I guess then the, the follow-up question that I have in general is that we've, we've given you a bunch of feedback and had a conversation tonight. But I'm not clear, what are the next steps? I know that we're going to be heading in this meeting towards a vote. But I don't necessarily know that if we have all the data that we want to be able to make that vote for tonight, let alone in three weeks from now, when we may be talking about whether we're going towards a hybrid model or something like that, if that was possible. So I guess I'm not sure about process here. You know, Cindy, so I'm not sure what we're, we've given feedback, but what are the next steps in terms of either the, the subcommittee that Lori and Megan are on or the superintendent, which you're working on? What, what, where are we going to go further with this in terms of getting this data clearer in terms of what we're looking for as a school committee?
Well, I guess, you know, one of the things that I, I understand what you're saying, Maren, about gathering that data. And as I was going through that exercise, I did get a little, you know, lost in it because then I think there comes a point where you start thinking, okay, well, are we considering, are we waiting different areas differently? If I have a large number of staff coming from, say, Holyoke and Holyoke's numbers are a little higher, and I have maybe one staff member that comes from, I don't know, you know, Amherst or something and their numbers are low, you know, how do I, do I take that into consideration differently? And that's why I think that the metric that I tried to share last week, rather than looking at each town individually, should we consider kind of the 5% by county? I, I don't, I don't think, you know, any county in Western Mass has even been at a 5% at all since this has started. So I, I, but I'm, I could be, well, I shouldn't say since this started because I don't think they were gathering that data early on, but since they've been collecting data. And, and I am not sure about East Hampton being over three since they started calculating the data. I know they've been in the twos. I know we've been in the twos, might have been in the threes, but so I'm just wondering, based on the metric that I shared last week, which is based on data like, I think it was the CDC had the 3% and the, and the WHO. And I think that who had the 5%? I can't think of where we captured the 5% metric from. But it was someone. Was that what?
I don't remember.
Okay. But, you know, I, I think, you know, is it? Megan, I don't even know if I could put you on the spot. I don't think any county out in Western Mass has been at the 5% positive test rate.
Yeah, a 5% positive test rate is enormous. That's like kind of in crisis mode, which is, you know, kind of going back to that point I made before where we have these guidelines like 3% or 5%. But they're kind of the bare minimum. By the time we reach some of those guideposts that have been given to us. Unfortunately, it's just become, you know, the pressure from all angles on Desi and on the governor, you know, it, it's huge amount of pressure to release certain information to put pressure on doing certain things that may or may not align with the science of it. Like, you know, no, I don't think we've reached 5%. 5% would be really high. That'd be a lot of cases in the area. You know, I think we'd be all staying in our house a lot more if that was happening.
Yeah. So it's a 5% was the New York State range. Centers for Disease Control and WHO, oh, they have the 5%. Harvard Global Health had the 3% positive testing rate. In Connecticut was using 10 new cases daily, 70, 70 new cases weekly per 100,000. I don't think we.
My point about, like, I can come up with what the data looks like of what low infection rates mean. But it's just another line on here that says, New York State says this, CDC says this, and Megan Harvey says that. You know what I mean? It's like, we look for certainty and, and we're trying to make our own certainty. And it's not that we shouldn't do that. It's that the people who should be handing us that, the guidelines haven't done it. And we're six months in and it's not coming. Right? So we have to come up with a way to use what we have to come up with a level that feels tolerable for East Hampton. And it, you know, that's an unsatisfying answer, but.
No, thank you.
You didn't want, you guys didn't want me to come up with that metric. I was trying to hang it on something quantifiable.
The other thing I wanted to say about using local data, the data exists. You're absolutely right. And just because something is a hard task, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, right? It's sort of like saying, you know, just because it's hard to go get testing, doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. You find ways to make it easier. So I totally agree with your point though, like we can figure out a way to get the, the local data. I guess the question that I'm more was trying to emphasize is that as towns get smaller and the population sizes get smaller and the caseload in general gets smaller, the reliability of when exactly those four cases happened is not as clear, right? Like, we don't know what day of the infection you went and got tested. If you're one of, what do we usually say, three cases in East Hampton or three new cases or whatever? You know, the specificity of that data and how reliable it is, is sort of the question, right? So we're hanging our hat on fewer data points.
Yeah, but we need to hang it on something.
Absolutely. Which is, my only point is that, that's why you have to look at larger numbers. The more data you can have and the more that East Hampton, Northampton, Holyoke, Amherst line up with state level data and you can see the trends. You know, that, that's why you have to have it all in there. So you're not hanging your hat on three data points.
Yeah, I, I guess, Maren, and my point just is that we really want to, as well as looking at what you have, look at the surrounding towns. You know, we do take a number of students, for instance, from Holyoke. So it's really important that we keep an eye on those those cities and towns that have a big impact on our population. That's really it. Boy, what, what a great conversation this was. It really was. Nice presentation. And does anybody have any other question? Because other than that, we can let Megan relax and go on. Shannon? You're on mute.
Okay. The data's out.
Oh, it's out now?
Yeah, hold on a second. I just don't know where it is.
I feel like we're, we're checking something in real time with each other.
You ready? Are you ready? Um, we have less than five. Okay. The average daily incident rate is 1.8. What else do you want?
Holyoke?
We're, we're unshaded. And our positivity rate is 0.25.
Okay. Holyoke? You're looking at it too, Allison?
Yeah. Holyoke had 23 new cases in the last 14 days. They're in yellow. And their positivity rate is 1.21. Hatfield had zero.
Thank you. So how about South Hadley?
Hadley had zero.
Hadley?
Hadley was zero.
South Hadley?
Only one.
Who was?
Northampton is only one.
Cool. Zero.
South Hadley?
Less than five.
Okay.
So their positivity rate is 0.11. Southampton is zero.
I don't have the list off the top of my head. I wish I had it.
Are you guys seeing Springfield?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, Springfield's on 95 cases, 4.3, they're yellow. And the positivity is 1.1.
West Hampton is zero. Westfield is 13. They're in green. They're 0.94%.
West Hampton, zero.
Yeah.
Agawam on here again is really low. Less than 1% positivity.
The trends in Western Massachusetts continue to be really positive. And if you look at that metrics table right across the top, that red column is like, we have to stay virtual. And all of the shades in between are, let's think about how we can safely welcome populations back. You know, I, I think that's what the science sort of points towards. Right? We're not in a crisis mode at all. We don't have to just shut down and stay at home. The question is how to, you know, bring in safely, thinking about things like ventilation, including in bathrooms and, you know, what we do with masks and how long people are wearing masks and whether or not they're eating at school. There's a whole bunch of stuff that goes into figuring out how to make a reopening safe. But I think it can be done with limited groups.
Thank you for that. Megan, I appreciate, I appreciate hearing that opinion. Yeah. That's helpful.
Thank you.
Still don't have a lot of that data or information, do we?
No, I think the mayor's going to talk about that during. No, I think the mayor's going to talk about that during, um, the, our section under other.
Okay.
So do we want to do that before we talk about Remote Plus beginning in October? Kind of switch that?
Okay, so we, um, we, to, today, we submitted to the Department of Energy Resources an extensive proposal for a request, a qualitative request for pro, proposals to go through every city building and, um, assess what we would need and why we would need different retrogrades, uh, the cost, uh, benefit analysis. And around COVID-19, around efficiencies of, for energy that we need to look at as mitigation and, and around COVID-19 within our buildings can happen because it's different now than it is in the winter, than it is in the spring and, and the fall. We are waiting for comment back from the state, and we are hoping to have the actual bid up in the next eight to 10 days. We anticipate quite a few bidders. It's really complex. The state might ask us for some more information for a complete request. But the, w- we have, um, in hand already, uh, CARE Act money to address these problems as they come up. So it's, it's not like, okay, we get the request and then we, I need to go bond for the money or, or whatnot, or, or even get an appropriation. It's already in our CARES money account to start the work. I, I feel like I must say, and I, I said it to a cou- in a couple of emails, some of you guys saw, I think when that data starts to come back, first, the school buildings are prioritized to know where we stand, to see how, you know, kind of like, it, it was, it was great for me to hear, um, Megan a- about like, these are the, these, these are the data points we need to consider. And then, all right, so knowing we're trending down, what do we need to make the, the physical plant environment safe? Or, or how we deal with that? So the school buildings are, are prioritized, and I would just, you know, I, I candidly, there will be a balance for the city budget and choices for this committee about what money we actually invest in what school buildings, given what we're looking at over the, you know, the next two years. So the, the interest or the feasibility to put all this money into each school building without considering learning in other buildings or other methods, you know, I would strongly encourage if, 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 you know, the, the price comes back big. I mean, I, I, I do think that there will be some buildings, somebody mentioned the high school, that's very likely to come back with some, I don't want to say easy fixes, but very affordable fixes, right? So all of a sudden, we have this big, you know, building that, that's, you know, meeting the requirements that, that we want, and with downward trends, then, you, you know, we can look at different populations, or, you know, I completely leave that up to, to Superintendent Leclerc and her, and her many work, you know, things. But, but it's also a possibility, and Chicago saw this, that it comes back, and it's, it's so cost prohibitive, never mind supply chain. That school, you know, whatever it may be, is de-prioritized to get up and running, compared to other schools or public buildings with that, you know. So the proposal went to the state today. We're hoping it hits, it should, it, it should hit the combines where all s- city bids are posted in the next eight to 10 days, and we, we expect a competitive set of, 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 of bids to come back. And the money is in place to act on those bids and contract as soon as we possibly can.
And, and Allison, we don't have the Colliers reports yet, right?
No, but if I could just talk about that for a minute?
Sure.
So, so first, you know, I want to really, um, thank the mayor because the, the process that they're undertaking on the city side is much larger and more extensive. And of course, it encompasses many more buildings in the city than, uh, what we were doing. So on a smaller scale, we considered our, our schools and knew that we wanted to kind of get the ball rolling while the mayor is doing this, this larger undertaking. And so we hired Colliers International. They have commissioning agents, engineers that will come out and do an assessment of our schools. And what we are specifically looking at is air ventilation. We're not necessarily looking at efficiencies and that sort of thing, and, and as the mayor said, there'll, there'll probably come a point where we'll make some decisions about investments, but we're specifically looking at ventilation issues in our buildings. That's, that's kind of exclusively what we've charged them with doing. So it's, it's a smaller project than, um, than the mayor, so we were kind of able to get it going. And, um, so we're awaiting that report from Colliers, which should be coming in soon. And, you know, as the mayor said, I think there's going to be very little that we have to do at the high school, and I think the mayor would, would probably agree. You know, people have, have said here in this type of meeting, and maybe even on forums, like, the high school's pretty new, like, why, why is it closed? Well, I think if you read a lot of the guidance, like the ASHRI guidance, it says that, you know, if your building's five years old or newer, then it's pretty much guaranteed that it's going to be up to par of where it needs to be. That five-year demarcation is kind of the threshold where you might have a, a filter that's not quite the most up-to-date filter. So our building happens to be from 2013. So we are just a little over the five years. So we do want to take the extra step and make sure that our building, we're, we're doing all the things we need to do. Do I think it's going to be an easy, quick fix at the high school if there's anything to do? Yes, I, I do think it will be an easy, quick fix because East Hampton has invested in a newer building. So, you know, it's not going to take much to retrofit that. But that's kind of that, that's why, and, and, you know, I, I don't want to speak for the mayor, but that's probably that five-year mark is why we didn't just automatically say, yes, this building can be open. Because if it's older than five years, you need to do your due diligence and make sure that everything is up to date and where it needs to be. So, um, we are looking at the, um, you know, there are no real COVID-19 building standards. We are looking at the, um, Harvard, Harvard put out some, um, targets for school classrooms that we're looking at. And ASHRI, which is a national organization, put out targets for what we should be aiming for to reopen classrooms. Those are the standards that we are using to help us in our work. So I know that people have been wondering about that. So once we get the report back, I, I'm not looking to keep it a secret. I will, we may have to summarize it for people in the community in some way, but then we'll also talk about what we're doing to make corrections. I, you know, I know that people have said things about, you know, Whitebrook, it's an older school, but the air quality has tested fine in those, in that building in previous years. Now, are they going to make recommendations for things we can do to make improvements there? I'm sure they are. And are we going to need to look at options like, okay, we have some interior classrooms? Maybe those are not going to be the best spaces to use. Maybe we need to think creatively about using other spaces. Yes, those are all things that are on the table that we're discussing now. We're looking at, um, HEPA purifiers, um, for classrooms. We're looking at, um, all different kinds of things that we can do to improve the ventilation in our classes. Some of our buildings, we may not be able to get where we need to go. But we have already done some things to try and improve them, you know, for example, Maple School, which is, you know, one of our oldest schools, doesn't have an HVAC system, but they have huge windows. And we know that if we have screens in all the windows, which we invested in this summer, we built screens for all the windows, then we can get up to five air exchanges, you know, per hour. So that's getting us some air quality, uh, some air ventilation in those rooms. So we're moving in the right direction. So this is really on our radar and something we discuss every single day. Learning more about air exchanges than I want to know. But we are really trying to make inroads, and so the next step for us is really to look at, you know, we are hoping to maybe use some of our CARES money. Um, I'm hoping that maybe, you know, if the city has funds, that they can contribute if we do need to buy, you know, um, filters or MERV, you know, MERV filters, anything like that for our HVAC system, or portable filters for our classrooms, then that's what we're going to look to invest in if it's going to help us to get back in classrooms faster, you know. So that's where we are, but we're waiting for the recommendations. And, you know, I hope I'll have our recommendations, and then we've already said to the people that are working with Nicole and trying to help her get this, that we'll, we'll give them everything that we get from our study, which they feel will only help inform the work that they're doing. So, um, that's where, that's where we are right now.
And do you have any sense from them? You don't have a, like, they're not telling you you're going to get it Friday, the reports.
We have it this week, yes.
Okay, so tomorrow or Friday is possible. Okay, okay. Okay, um, so, uh, if there's nothing else, we should be talking about the Remote Plus beginning October 13th and voting on it.
Hey, well, if I could just say a few things about the Remote Plus, you know, when we, when we talked about Remote Plus, we were talking about our special populations of students primarily in our significantly separate special ed classes. We were also talking about our ELL population, our homeless population, and our foster care students. All students that we feel are vulnerable are at high risk because it's difficult for them to engage in remote learning for various reasons. There's a, there's a language barrier, there's a disability barrier, perhaps they're not in a secure location for their housing. You know, there are a lot of reasons that those are the students. You know, people have said in this meeting tonight, um, you know, we need to be thinking about mental health issues. These are vulnerable students in our district. But I also want to recognize that many other districts are also considering vulnerable populations such as kindergarten, because, and, and, and that's, if there's one plug I can make, or one plea I can make, it's that remote learning all day is a challenge for our youngest learners. It's, it's very difficult for families. I've heard, I've heard so many positive things. Parents are, are really pleased with our teachers. They're working so hard. But it's hard to get a five-year-old on a computer all day. So there are a lot of communities that are bringing back their youngest learners when they talk about, um, their vulnerable populations and their special population. You know, I, I, I put this out there to you. It's not something that we've talked about before. I don't expect you to give me an answer on this right now, but I think that it's something that, you know, we should think about exploring. I know Sarah Mocheck was on this call. I don't know if she's on here now. We had approximately, we had shared data with you several weeks ago that we had approximately 110 students, 108, 110 in our special populations group. Sarah has reached out to all of them, and it's probably, uh, about 50% of them would maybe take advantage of coming back during that, um, that time in October, if we bring students back. Some of them are vulnerable medically and may not be able or willing to come into the building. So I just put it out there that we may have capacity, if we vote on Remote Plus, to also include some of our youngest learners who could choose to either continue remote if that works for their family dynamic, or they might, you know, want to explore coming in if that's a better option for them. And, and developmentally, I think there's some merit to that. So I know we have not discussed that before, so I didn't, I don't mean to throw a curveball at you, and we don't, definitely don't need to decide on that tonight, but I, I put that out there for your consideration.
I don't think it's really a curveball. I think it's an important population. And, uh, you know, I think having us reach out and expand to help as many as we can, I can tell you I am in favor of that. So, you know, absolutely, I would like to go there. So, was that Marissa?
I, I agree as well. I really appreciate you putting that into the conversation.
And I, and I don't, you know, numbers-wise, I, I don't, Sarah, if you can, I think we probably have maybe 125 students in kindergarten or less, probably less than that. You know, if, if 50 or 60% of those students chose to came in, chose to come in, I don't think it would totally change the dynamic of what we're trying to do. And maybe preschoolers, who we maybe have, you know, five or six preschoolers that would come in. But I'm just, I'm just trying to put some reality around it for you.
I have the numbers of the substantially separate groups, if you want that information.
Do you have like the total from your, um, review of who might come back?
Yep, so what we have currently is all preschool and all of the substantially separate have been contacted. We did not, we did not do the high school yet because we struggled to figure out what group. We just sort of identified what that would look like. And then we don't have homeless, foster, or EL students done yet. But of the special populations substantially separate, there are substantially separate programs, there, there were 48 students. Originally, it looked a little higher, but things have shifted. So out of the 40, the 48 students, 43% of those families have said they would send their child in for in-person learning. 23% said no, and 33% said they were unsure. So we have, um, I think 12 students who would meet the criteria for homeless and foster. I don't know, we, you know, I haven't, I haven't gotten them yet. And then I think there's probably less, there's less than 50 EL students, and we also have not done that yet because we wanted to make sure we were doing that languages and, and, um, having people that they were comfortable with, um, communicating with, reach out to them. So that's what we've got right now.
Great.
Nicole?
Laurie, Laurie, and then the mayor, Laurie?
I just wanted to say that Allison said she didn't want to throw us a curveball, but we were mentioning kindergartners a lot. Like, I mentioned kindergartners so many times. I wanted to see them before school started in the tents, meeting their teachers, because I knew it was going to be so difficult for them. So anything we can do for the younger populations, I totally am in favor of them.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just wonder with the kindergarteners, and, and I've gotten a lot of that feedback, uh, too, and younger, you know, uh, special populations, do we look at the Desi guidance of August 28th around partnering with EEC facilities to expand programming for that younger population? I had a couple of really good conversations with Desi, um, and DOE board members around clarification of those programming, and is that maybe, especially I think about the buildings that kindergartens will go back to? Are the older buildings, you know, I don't, you know, I, I, I don't even know what to think about the, what the older buildings will look like as far as retro. But is it worth, you know, is it worth the time to talk about those EEC providers and partner maybe their space with our kindergarten teachers? Because I've, I've heard directly from some kindergarten teachers that it's just, you know, it's breaking their heart because they've got these, you know, little bobbins on the, you know, in the screen, looking at them, and, yeah, so I, I just throw that out for consideration. I, I think that report gave a, a lot of interesting ideas around before, after, but also for our youngest and, and getting them into a classroom for some part of a day. So just consideration. Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Yeah, I guess I just really have a question around that.
Yeah, I guess I just really have a question around that. Wh-what is the thinking behind the benefit with partnering with an EEC as opposed just to offering education ourselves? Um, I'm, I'm not sure that any of those EEC buildings are in better shape than our buildings. You know, I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of the childcare centers that I know of downtown and they aren't new high-tech buildings. Um, and they're not being held to the same rigorous standards that we are holding ourselves to. So I'm just, I'm not sure why that would be a safer move for our, for our kids um, than just bringing them in and even using our high school space. So I'd love to hear more mayor of, of what you're thinking about.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I don't want to pull this too far afield of, of what we're talking, but, but in mine, I would say using the expertise, a lot of those EEC providers in town were emergency childcare providers and they're, they were, they're really on it with PPE and spacing. As far as the location, and I've been thinking about that as well, I, I do think it would be easier to find um, uh, private sector space that is up to our standards or very close. Um, that, that we could find and partner with the EEC folks who have the expertise and our teachers and our staff. I mean, there aren't that many kindergartners and, and to start somewhere there, I think about the new stuff on Route Ten. Even some of the Mills space has some interesting, you know, I mean, I haven't, it, I haven't, what, what I have done is I've talked to people in Hoyoke and Springfield that have had success with that. Um, some through agencies we don't have, like Boys and Girls Club and, and YMCA. Um, but also with some of the EEC providers and how to find a safe space air circulation wise or even some outdoors, but partnering those EEC with parent, sometimes parent helpers and our own teachers, which I think that's something else I'd really want to get uh, uh, you know, out there. If, you know, if there, there can be some conversation, I know there are already with the unions uh, around getting into a safe place, a safe space, other than probably our, definitely other than our schools to get those um, the, the kindergarteners in. So that, yeah.
Um, I, I, you know, I, I don't know enough about this topic. Um, I know that some of the conversations that I've had with the principals and with Sarah, our sped director, have been around the fact that the early childhood centers that we have in the community, number one, are filled pretty much to capacity during the day with our little ones that are um, not in school. You know, they need a place to go. And number two, I've heard directly from the principals and Sarah that some of the challenges are that those teachers are not necessarily equipped to handle some of the um, challenges that some of our um, regular education students or our students with IEPs are presenting. And so they just haven't had the benefit of training and with the larger numbers that they have in their um, capacity, they're, they're challenged a little bit. So that's, that's a little bit what I've heard, but that's only anecdotal and I don't have any clear data on that. I, I will say that I did have a conversation with Champions this week, which is the before and after school program we have at um, Center Pepin and at Whitebrook. And they are getting ready to go again. They're getting, they're getting ready to ramp up. I had a preliminary conversation with them in which um, I basically gave them uh, just two kinds of options. Number one, I said, if um, our high school is the only building that we can get in fairly soon, what will it take for you to go through the EEC licensure to bring Champions in at the high school for our youngest students up, using some spaces up there? So it's a process, but they said it's not insurmountable. Particularly at this time in the state and they are um, a provider that has been open throughout the state during the, for the essential care workers. So they are, they've got all that down. Um, they've been doing it in other communities. Uh, they have of course said to me that it is easier for them to open in either Center Pepin or Whitebrook where they already have the licensure in hand. Even if it's necessary for them to go to a different space in those buildings, they said that's very easy to do. So I basically said to them, okay, I want you to get ready to go because pretty soon, within the next, you know, week or so, I'm going to either tell you, start at the high school or figure, let's figure out some spaces at Center Pepin or Whitebrook. Um, and if we can move forward with that, I'd like to do that. So of, of course, you know, I'm gonna need the green light from the mayor. I haven't said definitively that they're going to do it one hundred percent. I just know that it is a need. And um, they're dying to get back into the community and I think that if we can do that in some safe locations in our schools, because remember, even if we bring back these vulnerable students, these special population, two days a week um, may not be enough. You know, they, some of them may need, um, their families need to work. So they may need to have, you know, to switch, to go to Champions for a couple of days and then their classroom teacher for a couple of days. And the Champions group is um, on board to help them with their remote learning. Like they have the relationship with the teachers, they can make that happen. So we are doing some, some behind the scenes work on that.
I would just, I, I mean, the, I understand the school thing and what I suggest is, um, so, you know, I, I don't want to play ping pong with this, but I also know that EEC providers who are licensed and have staff that are licensed, I suggested that they're partnering with, with, and, and for for kindergarteners, uh, the providers that I've talked to around the, the county is that the spaces are tight because they have had to close. So there are some who are still operating and yes, indeed, they are at capacity. What I suggest is I do think that there are alternative spaces in our community that are newer and safer that we could use that guidance from DESI and early childhood and partner our educators with EEC and follow the EEC classroom guidelines. Because the second, oh, I'm sorry. And the second thing I just, like, once we get those reports, whether that's Colliers or this big bid, supply chain's an issue. We're, we're one, we're a small school district and, I mean, Worcester's about to do this. And uh, you know, I, I, so that's my other concern is, we, we find out we can do two things to get the high school online and those filters are back ordered until February. So I'm sorry, Marissa, I'll.
Yeah, I just was wondering, are you talking about literally sending kindergarten teachers in person to these private sector spaces to work alongside EEC? Are we talking about EEC facilitating remote learning?
No, I'm talking about our teachers going to a location pairing with the EEC and the guidance that DESI put out um, on the twenty-eighth of August for in-person learning for the little ones.
Baron?
Oh. Um, I'm just trying to wrap my brain around this and um, I'm really struggling. So I'll just say that upfront because our, our business is to be offering public education and I don't understand why um, we're basically saying we should privatize uh, and send them off to some other location to other kids. Um, because we've got really good buildings or building at least, but it might not quite hit that threshold. So we're gonna send them to buildings that are almost for certain older than our high school uh, with less review. Um, and uh, the steps to get our teachers into those rooms and with those organizations, I can imagine is gonna be a whole nother level of teacher union negotiations versus working within our building and with our teachers in our schools with our students. So I, I guess it feels like it is making a whole big mess of a situation where we're pretty close in terms of our high school and I agree that we want that review because it's past the five years. Um, and yes, you're right, we may not have to be able to get the filters, you know, immediately. And so there are questions that we need to work through, but I think trying to privatize our education is not the direction that we want to go in and not send our students off to other buildings that we have even less control over. Um, and in settings that we have less control over. So that's
I would disagree.
That's been a larger concern to me than saying that we need to bring in our special populations into our building that's pretty good and getting them actually the education back on track for the education that we are supposed to be giving them as a public education entity.
Mayor?
I would say that the private sector already has the resources to up their air quality and circulation. I would also say that this would be a lease agreement that they would have to meet our standards and it would be a short-term lease agreement given the lack of space. The idea that we're privatizing education by using all publicly certified educators, I don't think is privatizing. If we want to roll the dice and wait for our little ones to get through what we need to do to make sure those buildings are, are, are okay. And we're gonna roll the dice on supply chain. We are looking at students coming into some buildings as late as January and February, and I don't think I'm exaggerating. I offer only an opportunity for our schools, our teachers to work under what is DESI's guidance, under our, our curriculum in a space that we are leasing that meets our requirements from a landlord who has private sector money to upgrade their systems faster than we can, to put our kids with their teachers under what DESI and EEC has given us as something to explore rather than to wait on supply chain and reports.
Allison?
Yeah, so I, I think that maybe we're, you know, maybe, maybe we're just getting a little ahead of ourselves. I think, I think that if we can bring back students into our buildings and we can do that safely and in a timely manner, then I think that that, I think that most of us would agree that that would probably be our goal. From, from an administrative perspective, it's important for safety reasons. And I'm not talking about COVID safety, but for safety reasons that I, I have administrators there, I have counselors there. And, you know, all, all of that. So I think that that's the, the goal that we want to strive toward, but I think that the mayor raises a good point. If there are obstacles that are in our way, that become too um, insurmountable such as getting items that we need to retrofit our buildings because of supply chain issues, then I agree that it would, it would behoove us to explore other opportunities because I wouldn't want um, us to not be doing what we should be doing because we can't get our buildings to where they need to be. So I agree that we should explore every option, but, but I think that, you know, if we can um, take up, you know, just take this evening, our thinking and put it to, you know, are we going to begin Remote Plus? If our metrics continue the way they are in October, are we going to consider bringing kindergarten back if we can do that um, safely? And, and then we need to overcome or address the building challenges that we have in front of us. And I think, so I think that's, that's to be considered. And I think that there, there's going to be definitely work ahead for us on that front. And I, I think, you know, I, I take what the mayor is saying and, and I want to consider that because there is the, i- it, it could be likely that one of our buildings or, or several of our buildings, we may not be able to get into in a timely manner, if at all, based on um, a standard that we're trying to reach. So I think we do need to keep, you know, our options open, but I think ideally for me um, as the, the person that oversees the entire school district and the students that are in those classes, I want to make sure that our administrators are there to support our students, our special ed teachers, our providers, you know, OTP, you know, all of those layers. And I'm not saying that, that you guys don't want that. I'm not saying that at all, but those are things that, that go through my, that go through my mind. So that's just where I am in my thinking. I'm trying to just take, you know, one, one foot in front of the other, one step at a time.
So it looks like we have a lot of unknowns. We don't have the Collier's report. Um, our numbers are going in the right direction. They're lower. Um, can we entertain the option of starting Remote Plus at the high school, which is a building that we think would um, pass the, the easiest and at least begin to plan for an October thirteenth beginning for special populations and kindergarten. I'm thinking, pick the building that, that is the most likely to pass and at least vote tonight to barring any other changes in the numbers and them going up again. Um, begin to make plans for that October thirteenth, Allison?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think your, your charge as the school is really to identify if based on the health metrics, we are ready to go to Remote Plus.
Absolutely.
Then my job is to figure out where that's going to be. And I'm going to have to go see the mayor or call the mayor. Mayor, based on this information, you know, and, and, and see if I can work out with her where we're going to do that. I don't think that's a decision for this committee. I think our decision is around Remote Plus.
So that's not what I was trying to say. I'm sorry if I was confused, confusing in the way I spoke. I am not saying that we're in charge of telling you where you're going to teach. What I'm saying is we don't have any building reports right now, but we do have a hope that at least one building is going to be able to be used. So can we talk about and vote tonight? Because I don't want to vote, okay, um, October thirteenth, we're gonna start special populations. And then, you know, the mayor or the reports don't come in. I mean, obviously if nothing comes in and we can't, we can't go forward, we won't. But I'd like to just, I think that we could, we can worry about the buildings. You can worry about the buildings later. We have a pretty good sense that one building will pass. That's what I'm trying to say. So I would like to see how everybody feels about perhaps just targeting that October thirteenth special populations opening. Shannon?
Okay, I, I'm sorry, but we have made way too many hasty decisions this last few months. We don't have enough information, I'm sorry, to make a decision and say, we should have been working all along to this October thirteenth date. You know what I'm saying? Because that's what we said two months ago. And I, I cannot vote tonight based on the lack of information.
Okay, so you're feeling that the Collier report and the uh, building reports are?
I don't, I don't know why, I don't understand why this wasn't done before.
Why the reports weren't done?
Yeah, why? I, I don't understand.
Yeah.
But if, if.
I can try to answer your question, Shannon.
Huh?
I can try to answer your question.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're, if you're gonna have the reports Friday, why can't we wait till next week?
Well, I think that your decision is based on Remote Plus and the health metrics. It's, it should not be based solely on the condition of the buildings. Either the buildings are going to be ready or they're not going to be ready, but that should not, your decision as the school committee is based on the health data that you have in front of you. Are you going to be ready to move to remote learning? Then it's, a- as I said, it's going to be a matter of me sitting down with the mayor and deciding, is there a building that we can use? And if not, then we're going to have to put a hold on that.
Right, in my clunky way, that's what I was trying to say.
But that's what I'm saying, why are we gonna put out, why are we gonna vote tonight? But that's what I'm saying. Why are we gonna put out, why are we gonna vote tonight and put a hold on it Monday? You know what I'm saying? Why can't we wait until Tuesday until?
So I I'll I'll tell you, I'll tell you why. So this was the target time for us to think about looking at a calendar, Shannon. We really need at least three weeks to shift to a new a a new stage, if you will. We can't do it on a dime. And so there are steps we need to put in place. So if October thirteenth was our target, then we had decided back in the summer, I guess we counted back and said that around September twenty second, you wanted to be presented with health data that night. So if you recall, last week, September sixteenth, I gave you a metric overview to prepare you for the data this week. We just happened to put our meeting this week on a Wednesday, which puts us kind of a day behind. But for those families that are waiting for us to get to this next stage, this, you know, because we're not, you know, considering all of these issues, it makes it difficult for us. Remember that most school districts started on day one with special populations in place. Or they started maybe one week remote and then went to special populations the next week. Very few districts are going to have these these high needs vulnerable students out for as long as we are. We're one of the latest ones. So I really, I would, I would press you to consider that. And and may not change your mind, but I just want, I want you to know that. There aren't other districts really. I, well, one, I think South Hadley might be waiting, but other districts are bringing in these populations now.
Of course, I want to bring in the populations, but we don't know where.
Right.
And how it it's. I'm sorry. I'm just gonna be quiet.
Mayor?
I'm just, I don't, I hate, okay, so I was just looking through my notes and stuff. So now I'm confused. Because I thought we, as a group, talked about special populations coming into most likely the high school, even even before the reports, because we could work within the guidelines for total occupancy, kind of like it's the same. It's not like like what we were doing at City Hall. So I was just looking, so, you know, my apologies for going like on the on the kindergarteners or whatnot, but but did we not talk about special populations? Isn't that tied to October thirteen?
Yes.
And I know, okay, so I just, maybe that's what Allison is talking about, working with Sarah and myself to say, okay, special populations for October third. If that's what we're talking about now and working within occupancy levels, I I'm good, I I'm good to vote. Like, I'm
True.
I get it because I think we have demonstrated in different public buildings, if we watch the the pressure or the the stress on our our air circulation, it's it's going out. Okay, so, all right, I just wanted to make sure I'm talking too much, but October thirteenth and using space like the high school or or whatnot. Special pop, okay.
I have, I have talked about the high school mayor, but I have not said it will absolutely be the high school. That's your, you know, I I have to work that out with you and and all of all of that.
Right. We were just saying that we thought at the least it could be the high school. So yes.
It could be the high school, yes.
That's where the conversation has been going around. I am okay to vote based on the numbers that we have and the information that I think we're gonna have going forward. Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? To somebody?
I think Mary does.
Please go ahead.
So, I mean, my thinking is just that, you know, this would be a very different conversation if we were talking about the next phase. I think it's important to keep in mind that we can't get to that point unless we take this first step. And it's definitely possible that maybe we find something glaringly wrong with all of our buildings that we don't anticipate. But I think the vote tonight ultimately frees the superintendent to move ahead as with that decision, which is sort of, you know, when we voted on the initial phase plan way back when, we sort of said, you know, yes, this is what we're gonna go with, but we also just want to make sure ahead of time that the numbers haven't changed in some unpredicted way. So that's where we come in with this meeting, which is we essentially wanted to come in and say, do the numbers hold the way that we expected them to? And I think that's ultimately what we should keep in mind as we consider the vote about the thirteenth. The buildings are an important part of this, but they're also sort of a separate part that will need to be dealt with moving forward. So that's my perspective. I think that before we can really, you know, since we're talking about occupancy, before we can really say yes to the issue of kindergarteners, perhaps that is something we need to know more about which buildings are accessible to us, but also checking in with some of these other special populations that we still don't know exactly how many folks are gonna be in. I think that's gonna be an important part of that. So I I guess my opinion would be may we we hold off on the, you know, I hate to say it, but I don't know if the kindergarteners maybe need to be a separate vote once we have more information about exactly what numbers we're looking at, since we're talking about occupancy with the special populations. I hope that makes sense.
So I I think that, yes, I think that Jonathan, what she said is correct in the sense that bringing up the whole discussion about the buildings right now and is confuses the situation when we're talking about the special populations and potentially even kindergarten when we're talking about the numbers. Right? Because we're talking about being underneath that threshold of occupancy and so that we can bring these populations in. I would actually suggest that we do move forward, even with kindergarten. Obviously, that has to be done and would have to be, you know, Dr. Leclerc and Sarah and the other people involved would have to determine numbers and, you know, teacher to student ratio and how many classrooms maybe this would increase our number of kindergarten classes or what have you, but they could do those numbers and be able to find ways to make that work. Hitting the threshold, paying attention to staying below the thresholds of the individual classrooms and the overall building. So I think that, again, we can move forward with this conversation and understand that our buildings are safe, particularly our high school is safe, within that threshold of occupancy. So we and staying below that. So as long as we're hit, as long as they're paying attention to those numbers, we can bring in these populations now. We have paid attention to the health matrix. We just saw a report saying how much they're trending and in a in a way that's not, you know, jumping out of the water and saying that we have got a lot of, you know, major outbreaks because of college students or all those other things that we are concerned about still in July. We can now move forward with bringing our special populations in
Right.
other individual groups as well. One of the things that we had also talked about that I brought up several times is that we should be looking at if we're bringing in certain populations and we can hit a certain, stay below a threshold of a second grade can have ten students in that second grade, then our special populations and all those different groups only have six students coming into the building. We could potentially be creating a lottery system for four more students to be included in that group. And so I still think that that's an important thing to be able to offer be able to that are in need to bring their students into the classes. And if we're already gonna have a second grade, why don't we bring it, bring that number up to the threshold and stay below it, but then we can offer more positions, more spaces to those additional parents and their students.
I think that's what we've been talking about all along, and I I really support that idea. I I really think it's if we're gonna open up to special populations, we get the kindergarten kids in and we open up any vacancies, I absolutely agree. I mean, that's really been our message to each other and to the public that right right along, we would be asking to push as hard as we could to address the needs of the community. So I'm all for that, Mary. Marissa, did you want to say something or just nodding?
Just nodding wholehearted agreement. I really think that these populations desperately need in-person services, and I feel like we have an obligation to provide them to the best capacity. And I would also, you know, if we're if we're going to be spending money, I would rather see it spent on additional kindergarten teachers to improve our ratios than spending it on leasing leasing space elsewhere.
Jonathan?
So when we, you know, taking it from this perspective, I'm certainly willing to sort of vote to free the administration to pursue bringing in these additional groups remaining beneath the thresholds, once they've done the full sort of analysis of the figures to know that that is possible. I trust your judgment at that point.
So any other discussion? Do we want to make a motion?
I will move that we move forward with the October thirteenth start for phase
Remote plus?
Phase three, remote plus for our special needs with an analysis to be done on numbers of students to determine if we can offer additional space to kindergarteners and then families with additional needs through a potential lottery system.
I second that.
Okay, any more?
Too specific?
Did you have the right ph- phase? It's the remote plus. Is that two or three? I don't have the paper in front of me.
Three, because remember, phase one was the teachers doing.
Yeah, got it, got it. It's late. Okay, so motions been made. It's been seconded. Any other discussion?
But the only other piece that I would like to ask is that and the school department then can move forward is just that I would like a report back to our committee in terms of the numbers by grade, by teachers, by, you know, and lottery spaces, how we're gonna do a lottery system, things like that in a timely manner. So I don't know, we haven't decided when our next meeting is, but that that would need to happen in advance of the thirteenth.
Okay. Okay, so let's do a roll call vote. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Mayor? Oh, yeah, I'm you.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon, done, I abstain.
Okay, Marin?
Marin Goldstein, aye.
Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. Okay, excellent. So the next thing that we really do have to talk about is when our next meeting is. And then we can take a roll call vote to go into executive session. I I like the idea of getting figures on Wednesdays. But I am not opposed to having a meeting on Tuesdays. One of the questions that got tossed around is, is it time to drop down to two a month? And should that start? Should we have one more meeting? Because Colliers might have the report and we'll have numbers again. Should we have one more meeting before? You know, like back to back. So I'm thinking is it possible for us to meet again next Wednesday? And after that, there's no city council, so we wouldn't be we wouldn't be opposed to that one. After that, we would drop down to the fourteenth. Jonathan?
So if I remember correctly, we had discussed the potential of having a finance subcommittee meeting to do the initial sort of call through the Colliers report to determine what maybe the financial ramifications were gonna be. I don't know if that's still on the table or not, but my sort of thinking would be if if that smaller group could take the opportunity to meet off schedule to kind of do that initial dissection of the report and then come back at a later week to the full committee, be it say, you know, the sixth or so to still have, you know, the full report brought back here before the the start of phase three. I just sort of want to throw that out there as an alternative sort of option so that we can
Right.
have more flexibility with time and we don't need to tie everybody into it necessarily.
Right, we have a lot of options. So we can move to opposite Wednesdays to stay away from the city council. We could stay with Tuesdays. The reason why we initially, as we're moving forward, didn't want to stay with Tuesdays is that we're missing that Wednesday data. But I'm not opposed to either way of of doing it. Allison?
If I could just make a plea for Sue Colby, it is very difficult for her to keep up with a meeting every week.
I agree.
Go through and do the meeting minutes, and she just gets further and further behind. You know, a two or three hour meeting, this will probably take her, you know, eight to twelve hours to transcribe this meeting from the Zoom call. So it's it's very hard for her to keep. So that's my plea to you for that. There's no real pressing presentations that I need to give you in the next week or so. And related to Jonathan, and I know Marin and I have been conversing via email, you know, we're anticipating getting that Colliers report this week. So Dale and I will only be able to get our eyes on it, perhaps over this weekend. Dale and I won't even get a chance to meet to begin talking about the plan or talking about the recommendations until Monday. So while I'm I'm happy to share the report out with the finance committee, we won't have any financial numbers at that time because we actually need to sit down and cull through it and get estimates for for different things. So I'm, you know, it's open, but you know, I just, I wonder if it might be more fruitful to give Dale and I a couple of days to absorb that data, you know, find out the pricing, find out as the mayor has talked about, kind of the timelines that are that we're dealing with, and then have a meeting with the finance subcommittee, and then the finance subcommittee can bring back some information the following week or something to the full committee, if that's what if that's what Marin likes to do. If that's what Marin would like to do, but it's, you know, we're we're in a time crunch. It's just like, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to try and keep going at this pace of meetings every week.
And I agree. I mean, my sense is right now, I think it's, we've reached a point where we could safely drop down to two a month. That's my opinion. I think we've done all the hard work and there's nothing that's gonna change so quickly and urgently that we need to continue meeting every week. I mean, that's just my opinion. It's up to the rest of you. I'm okay with doing a meeting on the thirtieth or the first of October. I'm okay with doing a Tuesday meeting as we would normally do and doing the sixth and the twentieth. So I'm just wondering how everybody's feeling about it so we can make a decision tonight and let the the public know that. Lori?
I'm fine to dropping down to two meetings, but there's been one topic that I bring up consistently since this summer that we haven't dealt with, and that's remote learning centers. And I'd really like that to be on the agenda as soon as possible because I feel that there's a population that is not being served as we talked about.
Anybody else?
Slightly different angle. I'd like to stick to the Tuesdays, I think. I think when we talked about this last, we had mentioned Wednesdays as an ideal day for when we're looking at the data specifically, but I don't know that we're gonna be doing that at each of our meetings necessarily.
Right.
And of course, the data wasn't prompt tonight anyways, so.
Yeah. So do we go back to Tuesdays, the sixth and the twentieth?
Let me remind you, did we do first and third Tuesdays or second and fourth Tuesdays? I can't even remember at this point.
Well, we were thinking my we were thinking though that we wanted to meet before school. we were thinking though that we wanted to meet before school opens. Uh, thus, the remote plus opens. Is that correct? We want to meet on the sixth, at least.
Um, I agree.
So does someone want to make a motion? Do we want to vote on this? I want to make sure everybody is okay with the, um, it's looking like we're talking about October sixth. Okay, so we really don't have to vote on this. We can just choose if everybody's good.
So it does sound like the sixth works. And to sort of go along with what Dr. Leclerc is saying, then, um, if the finance subcommittee can meet to review, um, those reports and the sort of financial numbers that are put to it by Dale's work. Um, if we were looking at something like next Thursday, the first, um, then potentially we would be able to have that information in advance of that meeting as well. So I don't know, I don't want to mix the muddy, but maybe if Cynthia, Jonathan and Dr. Leclerc Thursday at four or Thursday at three, that works.
I'm fine with that, with Thursday. Dr. Leclerc, do you think that would be okay? A nice target date is Thursday, the first for finance sub?
Um, it depends on what time. I have an appointment at four o'clock. And so I may not be home till like five thirty, six o'clock. But I could do something before that or something that evening.
I could do three.
I could do three.
I could do, I could do three for like a half hour. I have to drive some, I have to dr- well, I can stay on the phone. I could do it on the phone.
Okay. And it's, I mean, it sounds like also Dale will have those numbers. I mean, I, what I would like to see is, I would, I mean, I, I, I've I've worked in building science, so I would like to see the report even before you guys are start, starting crunching numbers. Um, so as soon as we get the reports, I would like to see those sent out to us. Uh, and then we'll follow up and start to dig into some of the details that Dale can put numbers to, uh, on Thursday at, uh, what do we say, three o'clock then? Um, and then your time on the phone, on the car and, and Dale, continue the conversation and we can go from there.
I agree. If we have those reports ahead of time, we'll take less of your time, Dr. Leclerc. So, um, we're gonna have our finance subcommittee meeting at, uh, three o'clock on the first. And we are all in agreement that we will go back to Tuesdays and we will have Tuesday, the sixth. And then our plan is going to be the twentieth. We're probably off schedule from what we were, but I think every other week makes sense. Is that okay? All right. So six o'clock on the sixth, we will not have a meeting on, uh, the twenty ninth. Awesome. So can we have a roll call vote? Um, I want to thank everybody who stayed with us. Can we have a roll call vote to go into executive session? And we will not be returning. We will adjourn from executive session. We're going to do some, uh, conduct some bargaining with the, um, Teachers Association Unit A. Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzensky, aye. Thank you, everybody. And we will see you on the sixth of October. And, um, so when everybody hangs up, I'm going to propose we take a five minute break. If that's okay? And, uh, does anybody need a short break? I know I do for a minute, just to get up and move.
I, I could have pushed through, but I'll take it.
Okay. So, um, we need everybody else to be gone and then we will continue on. So we need iPad and Megan Kelly.
I'm on it, Cindy.
Yep, I see.
Andy Stanton Media.
Andy Stanton Media. Thank you.